All right. We'll go ahead and get started. So this is higher, we'll stand for prayer and pledge allegiance to the people.
Praise is on me, Father. We come to you now and we just give you things for all that you do for this community. We ask you to bless us and guide us, bless this council and guide our decision making. We ask you to just be with the residents in this community and all the visitors who come here and keep them safe and prosperous. And we ask you for all that they do for our community. We ask you to be with our staff and just everybody who works hard to make this community better each and every day. We also ask you to be with those who need, have health issues and they need your loving care and guidance through their recovery. And please bless them and guide them and their families through their recovery process. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen. The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Bassett.
Here.
Beverly.
Here.
Bailey.
Here.
Eggly.
Here.
Miller.
Here.
And then Seth.
All right. I don't see a rep flash pad. Nope, they weren't here tonight. So I do remind people to talk into their microphones. I've asked people on TV and different programs that we're on that sometimes aren't here. So speak up, speak clearly and talk in your microphone. So next on the agenda is approval of February regular council meeting minutes. Thank you much to a provision.
Second.
Roll call.
Miller.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Beverly.
Yes.
Bassett.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
We got approval of the bill for this session. Questions, concerns?
Move the approved and paid bills.
Like the Kali truck, $4,700 for PTO. It's like an automatic in it?
Yeah, it's automatic. The original bill was $6,400. That's what their original bill was. After enough fighting and pooting with them, they dumped it to 4,678.
Like what was wrong with the other?
It spun a bearing in it and chewed a bunch of gears on it.
Oh, no good? Okay.
They don't know why. It went back to the manufacturer. So if they warranty it, then hopefully this, most of this will go away.
Do we want to wait and see? Once you pay them, they're not going to do anything for you.
Well, this is, this is going to Kali. Not, I mean, it could be three, four, five months before we hear anything. So I prefer not to be super late on the bill.
Good.
Did you make a motion, Robert?
I did, yes.
I'll second.
Roll call.
Bassett.
Yes.
Beverly.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Eggly.
Yes.
Miller.
You.
Next in your packet, you got a notice of public hearing with the Planning Commission. Any questions and concerns about that?
Usually include a map. Anybody know where this is at?
Out there on the, out there on the curve across from the entrance to the park on Spencerville Street.
That big empty lot?
Yeah, but the house trailer you said. There's a stone driver goes back there.
House trailer. Missed it. Oh, like butt schooly old house over that lot in there?
Yes.
Gotcha.
Eddie Warren from it.
Gotcha. Okay.
Any other questions on that? Good to go. Council committee reports.
Minutes for a sidewalk meeting during the year or in there pretty self planned. If anybody has any questions, they can ask them. And we are going to meet later this week to discuss the bills in general and what we want to do with them.
I had called real quick. I called the nuisance board meeting because I know Mike Bailey's retiring and wanting to get an update on some of the properties and things that he's been working on. So to give us a little bit of update, we met with a lady, my name is, and I don't have her name in front of me, I apologize. But it's a program through the county that they help with some remodeling, repair work throughout the city. People need financial assistance, windows siding, roofing, all that kind of thing. So we got right there it is. All be value planning. She has to come to our meeting, very nice, Dottie Boomer, housing support specialist. But she works directly with the residents, gets with financial assistance with them, and she's worked with several in the community. And she's really willing to work with our zoning inspector that people need that kind of service with their homes and properties that she's willing to work with them directly. Nice meeting with her, but I appreciated everybody was at that meeting. Just getting caught up myself with what's going on in the communities. So that's it on that. Anything else?
Kind of nuisance properties in a way. I know I emailed Mark's kind of familiar with it, but back in July bought property, had a lot of junk cars on it. And it's been there, been there for years. And I know you were aware of it, but assuming new person coming in will kind of address that again. It's been since July 16th.
Yes, sir.
You're still there.
Is this the same one with probate issue?
Yes.
Any other committee reports? We'll move over to get administrative report.
A few things. Just a reminder that the recycle lot is now open for the year. The hours are still the same. They are posted at the entrance on a big sign. Tuesdays and Thursdays, 1 to 6. Saturday, 9 to 1. Same as the end of the year last year, we are still not taking any grass at the lot. We don't have an outlet for it yet. Meadow Lane and the Beverly Drive bid opening will be this Wednesday in this room at 10:00 a.m. We are also taking applications for a full-time grade two laborer. And the applications can be picked up here or downloaded off of the village Tomorrow, approximately 9:00 a.m., we'll be taking delivery of our Enviro Site Sewer Camera Truck. They'll be here pretty much all day for training for myself and the other employees on this unit. And when it comes to the Parks Department, we have received 40 brand-new mighty tidy trash cans throughout the park. The old steel barrels, we'll probably end up just disposing of them, old steel barrels. Old concrete cans that are down there, we'll end up breaking those up and hauling those out as concrete. They were all actually donated by Whirlers. So we don't pay anything for them since we empty them into the Whirler dumpsters. They're not charging us for them, so thank you to them. We also took delivery of four new, four new aluminum bleachers for Fields One and Four down at the park. So the old metal wood bleachers will come out of service here in the next few weeks. The East Cornelia and Rock Street water main replacement will be starting in early May by home brink excavating. And then over the last three weeks, myself and Mike Bailey have presided over some interviews. We've had a total of six applicants. It was for the, for the new zoning official. And we, you know, interviewed everybody, took it into a lot of consideration. And I don't know if you want me to bring this up during this report, who I recommend out of all those people, but Jared Radford is who I would recommend for that position. And that's all I got.
Got a couple of questions on that camera truck.
Sure.
I can't for the life of me, maybe I missed a meeting or two, and I know I did. I don't remember approving the purchase of it.
It was part of finance committee when I did budgets.
But it didn't come to council?
Probably not, lest you ask for an itemized list of all the capital projects or.
I thought a purchase like that, it had to come to council for us to approve.
We refused it the year before when we asked for it, the year when we get the insurance. We had an option. Insurance and that raises, we took those instead of buying the camera truck.
Right.
Did you advertise for bids?
I did not advertise for bids. I called and got three different bids. I did call.
You can't do that.
Ron, let me speak. I called our, our state auditor, it's completely legal. I have three other bids. This is the lowest bid. It was purchased through state purchasing. I did not have to put any type of requests out there for purchasing anything. I did double check.
But it never came back to council for approval.
I know it came back through financing again this year. I'm just.
We always get to vote on stuff like that.
The bigger items. I mean, I.
Over a quarter million dollars and I called big.
Absolutely. It's a big.
Yeah.
And then I've been talking to department heads, all of them, and I said, when we ever approve through finance, projects like that, equipment like that, during the year when it's come up to purchase and or start looking at buying those types of equipment and or projects, I ask them to do due diligence and bringing it back to council as a reminder of what, when they're purchasing. It could be out of the gate.
It's always done, it's been done now.
Right.
All the time I've been here.
We did address that. So it's right back to committee council.
So for the zoning inspector position, you'd like to get somebody hired as soon as possible so they can cross train with Mike a little bit?
Yeah, they've only got a couple of weeks.
The person that you selected, Jared, is how soon is he able to start it?
Uh, next, a week from today, so the 11th.
And he'll be full time?
Because I think the more time he gets to spend with Mike and in the department, the better hope he's going to be able to start, so.
We took the point, anybody want to nominate him for the position?
I will. I'll second that. I know who he is.
Roll call.
Miller.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Beverly.
Yep.
Bassett.
Yes.
Eggly.
Yes.
So does he want to do the physical and all that, drug screen?
Uh, next on the list is anything else for Corey?
I was just going to ask, the tower isn't a well on the way in yet?
The tower does not have water in it yet. We are waiting for Caldwell to come in case we need to adjust, readjust the altitude valve. It was supposed to have been here last week. The wells are, like I said, the tower does not have water in it yet. We're waiting for Caldwell rep to be on site when we go to fill it in case we have issues with the altitude valve. We are still waiting on new paperwork for the altitude valve because they left it in the vault and the vault got water in it.
Anything else? Department heads, police chief, anything?
Oh, yeah.
Thank you. Fire chief.
Head First Response in last week to fix 503, our older bumper with all the packing. He's going to give me an estimate for putting in new packing, see what that costs. He's going to also look at the tower for the outbreakers because the hydraulic leaks we have. Other than that, I'm still waiting for a quote from Atlantic on that keypad that we need. So that's all I have right at the moment. Bruce, do you have anything?
Bobby.
Have you been, oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Have you been rattling their chain, calling them on that?
Yeah. Sure have.
And they just bully you off or what?
They said they couldn't get a, let's see, that was last week I called. They hadn't found one yet.
Did you have any chance to run that by first source when they were here?
I am, I showed him that, what it was, but he didn't. I didn't go in depth with him, so.
You might want to run that by him because he, there's a good channel. I mean, they do a lot of electrical.
Yeah. I'll do that tomorrow morning and I'll let you know, man. Any questions for me? Okay.
Okay. Got a whole list of things from Bruce O'Keeffe. He's got to go to work. So everyone should have received a job description for the EMS coordinator chief position. It's very similar to the one that you guys received a couple of weeks ago in the packet that Bruce gave you. We made that description because we need to get it approved to be able to hire. So if you guys want to read through that, and then we can talk about it more at next council meeting. So we've had some issues with 511 and 510. We finally got it all situated. 511 last week was looked at by First Response. We were having issues with lighting, AC, and heating. All the grounds were intact, but they did find that there was a battery that needed replaced. So we purchased one, put one in. Everything seems to be okay at the moment. So it's up and running. We're going to see how it goes. If anything seems to go wrong, we'll take it right back out of service. We also had an issue with 510 and 511. Our power load systems both went out on us. Luckily with our power load systems, you can manually lift them. So that's what we did for a while. Found out that it was also a battery issue. We had Striker come out. They replaced both of them. So everything's working there as well. On February 24th, we had our new medical director out at the station. Bruce said it was very productive. Everything went well. They kind of went over the issues that we had a month ago, a couple of months Talked about, you know, everybody having to get up to date on their skills and make sure we know what we're doing considering CMH has been on diversion quite a bit. And if they end up closing, you know, knowing your skills, knowing your job, it's going to be very important when you're transporting, you know, 30 I guess since we're on the subject of diversion, we were on diversion all last weekend again. Since January 1st, it looks like we've been on diversion 14 times. And it sounds like weekends are going to be the typical thing for us now of being on diversion. Staffing is pretty difficult on the weekends. We have part-time. One of our part-time just got hired for a different job. So every other weekend, he will not be available. So we're still struggling with that a little bit, hoping to get a part-time hire to kind of fill in that area. Let's see.
Abby, has there been any applicants on the position?
Yes, we've had five.
For just the part-time or the full-time?
We have one for full-time and then four for part-time. We set up interviews with everybody, should be happening this week. And then once we get those interviews done, we'll kind of decide from there. One of our applicants prefers overnight, so we're hoping that will kind of alleviate some of the overworking on the weekends or on the overnight shift because right now we're struggling with that. But hopefully by next council meeting, we'll have someone to recommend. Bruce would like to bring a basic class, an advanced class to Hicksville Station. He's hoping if we have a class here, it might bring some more people to volunteer. I know volunteering is, you know, few and far between, but you know, Sherwood's having a class and that seems to make people stick around the area. So I know that he's thinking about getting his instructor, so that would, that would be great. We also were down at CMH on Friday. We were talking to some of the nurses and they weren't aware that you could do an RN to a medic class. $3,500 through four county. And it seemed like quite a few of them were interested. He spoke with Dan to see if there was kind of like a transition because typically you have to have your basic before you can do your RN to medic. So he's kind of talking to him to see if there's some other things that we can do instead of making him go through that basic class.
Yeah, we know what you hear from that. I had a conversation with one of the nurses I worked and that seemed to be the one deterrent. Is that you have to have your basic first, or it's like taking a step back in order to go forward?
It is. And it's basic, I mean, it's, it's knowledge that they already know.
Do you know how long that, like how long does basic take? Do you know?
It's about three, three to six months.
Yeah.
I mean, well, it's six months with, I mean, just as, it's six months without having any medical knowledge, but with it being an accelerated program, it could be about three months.
Okay.
The basic thing is them just getting to know how to operate on a scene.
The reason that they really enjoyed that was because of PERS. They didn't realize that we had PERS as well. So a lot of the CMH nurses said that they would, they would do that. So we're looking into that. Just a reminder that we have a PFE meeting Tuesday at 6:00. Next Tuesday at 6:00. And then the billing company, it looks like everything got approved there. I actually had a meeting with Michelle on Friday. And I've got the basic paperwork around for her. So since everything got approved by Rachel, it looks like we're all set to go. So we'll start working on that. And she said it'll take about 30 days, but other than that, everything's in Does anyone have any questions?
Cheryl, this is kind of more a question for you than Abby. When it comes to this coordinator position, who does this need to go through? You know, I know this is kind of important that we kind of expedite this process so that we can get them staffed the way that they need to be, especially with the hospital beyond, more commonly beyond urgent. Does this need to be presented to full council? Does it need to go through a committee first? Do I need, does it need to have a pay scale attached to it? How does that look?
If you're going to change pay scale, yes, if it doesn't already exist. But it does not need to go to full council for approval.
Okay.
Doesn't?
No, it does.
It does.
It does.
It does.
It's a brand new. So as soon as you're ready, you can bet on it.
So probably have to go through committee. I imagine we'll, we'll talk about this at committee and then.
Money.
Yes. That's where you come in.
Speaking of that, real quick, I know Bruce had presented, he's not even, he left the room, but he had presented a packet with like updates on the hospital staffing. I know some of the council people didn't get some of that information, you know, because he was kind of looking at the overall impact of the runs, staffing and all that. And I think some of you wanted to see those numbers. I don't know if he gave all that to everybody. He was going to make some more copies of what he had presented to committee.
I can get that scanned up to everybody tomorrow. I'll get it scanned up, you know.
Okay. So I know we had talked about that. I'd like to see all that because that's all part of this whole process. So thank you.
And one more thing, we do have our medical director coming out on the 16th. That is a Saturday. He's bringing a SIM lab, so basically like a robotic mannequin. Starts at 9:00 a.m., so we encourage you guys to come out. There will be some subs for lunch and stuff, so if you guys want to come in.
When's the date again?
It's going to be March 16th at 9:00 a.m. Anything else for me?
Anybody have any question for Abby? I had a chance to meet the medical director and also the Northwest Ohio Consortium Director.
Yes.
Very nice gentleman. Very pleasant. They went throughout the whole building. They have a lot to do with the staffing and everything, and I think he had some training with Consortium here after that. So they've been real active in meeting with the departments and personnel and things of that nature, but hoping to get right on my track. So thank you for arranging all that. All right. Val, Gary, you got anything? Nothing? Starting to work on anything? All right, everything up and ready? Mowers are working? Weeders are working?
Yeah, everything's started up.
Gotcha. That's a good thing. Anything, any other, I don't think we see any other staff directors out there. Fiscal officer's report?
The sum status is holding steady. By the next meeting, we should have our influx of cash from the auditor. And the income tax was wonderful for November, February, up 23%. And utilities, just holding out. There's certainly never give you problems. All of that.
Do we have any questions for Cheryl? The mayor's report next. Got a couple of quick notes. I lost them. I look like I'm disorganized right there. First of all, I had a, I want to think the department had, we had a meeting, talked about something, I think it was fairly quality meeting and talked about several things, and thank you for being there. I did reach out to Michael Wall. He's the law coordinator for Brian Keller. And I said, I wanted to kind of get an idea of where Brian was. We're excited to have Brian bring up spec building to Hicksville, of course, but we're waiting on the Verizon situation. And I said, is he willing to be more patient or we need to get, you know, further down the road? Not kicking the can any farther down the road, but our due diligence, it's been two years. Michael told me and then Brian got with Erica and said, he's still wanting to do the project. He's very in favor of doing the project. We don't, we need to push forward to get the, you know, movement on the easement and everything moved out of the way. He said stay working on that, but at this time, just work with Verizon and American Tower and due diligence and pressing forward to get them to sign off on the paperwork. We don't need to press them any harder right now because he's got some other hires in the fire. He's probably looking at the project in 2025 now.
It's been two years.
I know that, absolutely. We've been talking.
So sooner or later, the guy's going to change his mind.
Well, like I said, we've reached out to him. I've talked to him at CIC meetings. He's very patient, but in the meantime, he's got some other projects going on. He's working with other, of his other companies. So he's patient. He's not upset with us at all. Everybody's more upset with Verizon to not even sign off.
Can't we, can't we sue him or something?
It's going to be, it's money, big bucks. They said, you're going to go after a big boy like that, you better be prepared to pay. And I don't. And I don't, he said, I don't think we need to go down that road yet. Michael said that, he's an attorney, you know, I think Rachel had a little bit of impact on that. If we don't have to do that and keep pressing them and putting more pressure on Verizon through communication to get them to sign off.
I thought on that, when we signed that, I thought there was a clause in there that either one of us could, could get out of that lease.
I, we could have, but I, I mean, Troy had worked on that a lot and we got Mark Orneke involved in that, but we talked about, we gave him so much time and we thought, you probably just shift around on the project and, you know, get the things moved. I spoke to Rick Rostifer on this with SMTA and their fiber optics. He goes, I ain't touching no fiber optics, since Verizon paid me to put it in, Verizon needs to pay me to move it, you know, kind of thing. He said, I don't wanna go against them either, so we've got several entities working on it, but I just wanted to give you this heads up that Brian's being patient. He knows we're working on trying to get the stuff moved and he's okay to work a little bit longer to, you know, get it moved, so.
He might have some big deal come up and, and.
You never know. I'm disappointed.
Use all his money that he don't have nothing to bring down here when he's.
He's still planning on doing the job. I'm just saying that, you know, through Mike's, Mike's communication with me.
Can't believe that we can't get rid of that people over two years.
But I think with, we're working with Rachel and Eric and Mark, even Michael, I mean, we have attorneys to, to correspond with their attorneys and see if we can get a push a little bit quicker. It's been a long time. It's kinda getting ridiculous, but.
When's the last time we worked on that?
Uh, they had some correspondence here about a month ago, but it was from American Tower saying they are okay with everything, but Verizon's gotta sign off the final documentation, so.
How frequently do we reach out to them?
Uh, well, when I first took the job, I called Mark one of my first couple of days and say, where are we at with this? I really wanna get it done. So from there, let a couple emails back and forth with Mark and Eric and Michael and Brian and, you know, the rep from American Tower said, we're signing off on it. It's all under Verizon. And she said, they're tough to move on, it's a big, big company, and they've had different attorneys. You know, she goes, I know they've had different attorneys have it on their desk, and then it gets moved to a different desk or a different attorney or gets pushed down in the pile, so.
Can you or Mark or somebody make that kind of a priority?
So heads up on that. Wanted to thank Rob for going to the council training along with me. It was informative, it was nice to go. I had a nice day and we learned a lot. You could pack a lot of stuff in eight hours and, but it was refreshing and I learned quite a bit. They had reached out, we have our solar eclipse coming, we are kind of in a good area for that. They were, health department has sent out an email alerting people, be prepared for a lot of people to come into your community. Or not in the main, I guess part of it, or right near the main section of a hundred percent kind of eclipse area. They're saying do your due diligence and maybe finding some parking for people or people do show up in your town. They might be parking everywhere just to view it, cause it's gonna be such a short period of time, so. They were just saying, make sure you're prepared during that time and everything else, so. What is it, April eighth, I believe? I put up, I put the email on your, on the desk tonight, so wanted to check on that. Also, let me find my notes here, I'm sorry. They're taking hero nominations. The fifty-fifth Hero Award for twenty-twenty-four is Thursday, March thirtieth. And they reach out through several awards. They got a hero, the award categories are Hero Award, Good Samaritan Award, Certificate of Appreciation. Goes to a lot of local residents who go above and beyond to help residents through certain situations. Police officers, fire, those kind of things that go above and beyond in certain, you know, life-threatening situations and things for your community. So there is an application, I have it in my office. You can reach out to, you can get that application online if you wanna nominate somebody. I was looking for nominations. But online form is just two thousand twenty-four Hero nomination. The email is mail at s c n w o dot com where you can download the form. You can fax it to four one nine six six two eight 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 eight. And it's through the Safety Council of Northwest Ohio Hero Selection Committee, and they are at eight zero one five Rinker Point Court, Northwood, Ohio. So if anyone knows of somebody that might be deserving of an award like that and just have special recognition, I would reach out to them. And if anybody has any questions about that, they're more welcome to call me at the mayor's office and I can give you the form and/or tell you how to get it. So wanted to let everybody know about that, so. That's all I have.
Before we adjourn, I'd like to have a very, very short executive session.
Our personnel. All right.
Well, before we get to that. Should someone was get told what went on in finance, the meeting?
Well, I think they were gonna present. I know they talked to finance about, you know, the splash pad.
Yeah, I guess those are stuff the rest of us need to know before.
Well, Cory's been working with, with them and the contractors and the upgrades and stuff with what they're doing. And I know Cory was getting some more numbers with some changes to the splash pad design. He didn't have those numbers as of tonight, but if he wanted to expand anymore, I mean.
I didn't know Charlie was gonna have minutes here tonight. He's the, he's the head for finance, so I don't know if he, I know he's sick or he's not here tonight, but the biggest thing.
It's fine.
The biggest thing, I'll say on the whole splash pad project, they said they're supposed to have representative here tonight to speak to us. I think it dealt with possibly the timeframe of starting and the original back in November sixth council meeting and November thirteenth, we had a special meeting. And the whole thing got up, brought up when the splash pad and pool were bid out separately. The pool was come in, were hired and splash pad, engineer's estimate was eight hundred and fifty thousand and it came up at eight hundred and sixty-nine thousand. They had raised eight hundred thousand and I was the one that asked at the November sixth meeting, who was paying the other, the difference, eight sixty-nine to eight hundred? Were they raising the money? Were we footing the bill? We knew that there was gonna be a little bit of electrical changes because electrical was gonna come out of the pool house and now it will be coming directly to the pump house. Also, we weren't gonna, we're gonna pay or possibly pay to get the hole filled where the pool was at. And there was also some engineering architectural fees for getting the changes done when it comes to the electrical layout and everything else. And so we wondered who was gonna pay the difference and council that time had said that they would pay the difference of, which I assumed was eight sixty-nine plus some electrical work. But right now, it sounds like, last time he had met with Sixmo, the foundation has come up with some changes and adding slides and a second slide and making a lot of changes. And Cory was waiting for a breakdown of what it would cost, but the last time, if I remember right, it was one point zero nine six million, I think.
Correct.
And went from eight hundred and sixty-nine million to one point zero nine million. And it's like, like two hundred and thirty-seven dollars, two hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollars in additions. And that's not all enough. That's all changes that they made to features of the splash pad. It's a big chunk of it, but we're waiting for the parts breakdown because when Sixmo gave the price, it was the electrical work. Three-phase, you know, four eighty-volt service, just in case you had to pull the future. And he was waiting to get a breakdown of what if we had two separate meters, one going to the pool, one going to the splash pad. And he's gonna have to add a light pole with some, maybe cameras or something else, the lights. And so he's trying to get the breakdown of all those, but there's, we went from possibly paying sixty-nine thousand, that's what contingency money figured in. The sixty-nine thousand dollar differs plus some electrical changes and, and design fees through Sixmo. So now it's looking at almost, I guess, it'd be two hundred, two hundred and fifty, three hundred thousand dollars now. And that's what, not what my intent was personally, but what's that?
Why are we still involved?
Because we're still being, building our thing and that's, I think, I'm not sure if they were thinking that committee was open in the checkbook and it's gonna be whatever they wanted to add to it. They could add, but I don't know. That's all, I was hoping they were gonna be here tonight to present.
I had told Greg, he stopped in my office and I said, Cory was checking the numbers with the electrical changes and different things like that. I said, if he wanted to be here, fine, but if Cory didn't have everything broke down with that, with the increase was gonna have full details of what the increase program was, then he would have that by our sixteenth meeting, so. I don't, it looks like he maybe chose to be at that meeting. Cause he went to address it.
What were the dates of those meetings again?
Which one?
What were the meetings?
Uh, November sixth was the first one and then November thirteenth was the second one.
And in either of those?
You can find those on HIX TV.
Right.
I rewatched it.
I'll probably back and watch too, but. Were, was there a dollar figure discussed in either of those two meetings?
Just what the engineer's estimate was and if it was within the contingent, well, if it's within the ten percent of the engineer's estimate.
You gotta be within twenty percent.
Twenty percent and being that it was at eight sixty-nine and the engineer's estimate was eight fifty, if the splash pad was within the engineer's estimate. But now you're keep adding. I know those are all change orders considered now, but there was never an actual dollar amount, because we didn't have a dollar amount of what the electrical design.
So we never discussed how much did the tab look at?
No, no, not to a dollar amount, other than sixty-nine thousand possibly.
The committee, that, that committee, they're not suggesting the electrical change is other than?
No.
No, that's.
No, 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 that's Sixmo, yeah.
I guess why are we, why are we changing here in midstream?
Well, we have to, because currently electrical is going to the pool house and there's no, electrical can't come out of the pool house anymore, there's not one built. So now the engine, so now they gotta redo the prints for electrical inspection through the state. So now they gotta show that electrical's going to the, the pump house for the splash pad, two separate buildings. And initially, they were gonna run three-phase into the, the pool house to run the pumps. And then they're gonna break off of that meter or those breaker, circuit breakers and everything, and they're gonna run service to main feed to the pump house. But now they can't run it from the pool house, cause there's not a pool house currently getting built. So Sixmo has to go in and redo the permits, redo the electrical inspection, all the prints, and they all have to be redone. Which wasn't a substantial amount of money, I don't believe, for the design or anything.
Now, the electrical portion was about eighty-five thousand dollars, cause they were going to, like he said, originally it's gonna go to the, to the pool house. Now the pool house isn't going in, it's gonna go to the pump house for the splash pad. But in this design, they are putting in a four hundred amp service, another panel for future for the pool. And I told them that, where we weren't gonna go that route. That's where that eighty-five thousand dollars came into play. We just need a hundred amp service ran to that meter for the splash pad. So I'm waiting to see what a hundred amp service does from eight, you know, what it takes it down to from eighty-five thousand, maybe it takes it to fifty thousand, I'm not sure.
Hundred amp? What are you gonna run off a hundred amp?
That's all the splash pad needs to run off of, what it's set up for.
Okay.
That's what they were gonna run out of the pool house was just a hundred amp service. See, when, when the engineer talked to AEP, AEP said that they would not put two meters on the same address. So the pump house, the pool had an address, so splash pad will get an address. I don't, I don't feel it's beneficial to us to spend an extra, I don't know, ten, twenty, thirty, forty thousand dollars to put a four hundred amp service in for something that may never, ever come to fruition. Even if it does come to fruition, I would still rather have a separate meter for that, so they are completely independent. One doesn't need the other.
Same thing we had with plumbing.
Yes.
Cause initially plumbing's gonna come out of the pool house and.
That's, that's a big, well, they're, they've, they've had a couple renditions of their features. And it gets a little more expensive each time.
I can't figure out why, why we're, why we're still involved. I mean, I can't, why isn't their group doing this?
They're doing the, the feature fixtures, that's all them. That's where we stepped aside.
They're just dreaming about what they want and then they come to us to get paid for it.
But I will tell you, when the number, I mean, I've got the numbers, but those are costs, that's not the, the contractor adding their.
It's their license.
Right, or, or mark up. See, the numbers that, that the foundation's seen is actually Astro's cost for the fixtures. Astro would normally mark them up twenty percent, so they're not marking them up twenty percent since their numbers have already been exposed. But with Nagel, they might have a fifteen or twenty percent on top of those fixtures.
Sure. Well, so you said it's gone ballpark by two hundred thousand.
No, it went from eight hundred and sixty-nine thousand to one point zero nine six, I think.
One hundred and ninety-two.
And so.
There's about thirty-four hundred dollars, I don't have to interrupt you, but about thirty-four hundred dollars in additional like concrete to be done to finish it off, so it doesn't have the original design that was supposed to, you know, butt up to the pool house.
So can, in general, for most part, from what, their eight hundred thousand dollars, what, I think, let's just say that's what their final was that they raised. We're almost, well, close to three hundred thousand dollars that we would be, the builders would have to pay.
I was just trying to do some math.
Two hundred and ninety-two thousand.
With them, if they're asking for thirty-one thousand for fixtures. Thirty-one and eighty-five is a hundred and sixteen, where's the other eighty-four thousand coming from?
That's why I wanted to get the whole breakdown of everything.
That was, what was the electrical change?
Well, but I, I went with eighty-five. Eighty-five and thirty-one, sixteen. You're talking two hundred thousand, where's the other eighty-four?
Well, they had, they had two slides, right? And then were those?
Well, yeah, their decision's thirty-one, roughly.
There might have been more than that.
Why are we paying for extra slides?
Well, that's what they were addressing with us, but I said, we're waiting to.
Actually, I wasn't making that decision.
I know.
I'm all for needs.
I'm all for the needs. And Sixmo's supposed to be giving that, right? Well, what the original print and everything, what that cost was versus, what those features cost versus what it is with all the modifications.
I believe out of the eight hundred and sixty-nine thousand dollars, it was a hundred and ninety-two thousand dollars for the features from the original eight sixty-nine.
That, that they don't have funding for?
No, it was.
Eight sixty-nine included the one ninety-two.
The original quote, so. We wanna see what the new cost is with all the changes of features.
But no, they no showed.
Well, I told him, I said, I didn't know if Cory had those breakdowns yet, so.
I'm still waiting for the electrical.
He, he said, after we talked with finance, he probably wouldn't have those numbers by tonight, so. I had mentioned to Greg, I said, we're probably gonna hold off and major discussion until we have final numbers.
Who's gonna give you those, this is a power company or a contractor?
Yeah, there's Wise Electrical's the ones that are, are their contractor, subcontractor, subcontractor that's doing it, so.
You know, I'm still lost. I used to teach math. How was one sixteen come up to two hundred thousand? What else is getting changed for eighty-four thousand? I included eighty-five for electric, thirty-one for the extra apartment misses. We're missing eighty-four thousand out of this two hundred. What else is getting added or whatever?
I'll have to pull it, pick it up, work it out.
Well, you're asking, you're asking questions, we need to get answers.
Yeah, that's what we ask too, but we ask the same question.
Cory's time.
Even for me, it gets more and more confusing every time it goes to the feature portion, it comes back.
I don't know why their group is not.
Well, can I say for one thing, that if, I know the eighty-five thousand dollars for the electrical. And then from, from the very beginning, let's just say after we have, we approved building the splash pad at the eight sixty-nine. Then they went through and they made changes and now the price went up, I have no idea, but the price went up to nine hundred thousand. And then more changes have been made and more features been added and then went up to nine fifty, nine seventy-five, and then throw your electrical in there and then it just keeps.
Well.
But that's what we wanna break down.
When all these changes.
Well, we just met on Wednesday afternoon.
I don't find them.
Well, I would account for it.
Yeah, yeah, that was a little substantial though, architectural engineering stuff for the, the changes, for the six thousand.
How can we make all these changes?
Electrical and concrete.
But the project's already been bid.
I didn't change orders.
Yeah. It doesn't sound like they're getting any.
Who's initiating the change orders, or?
Yeah.
I don't know.
We can, you can request the pricing, doesn't always have to be for the change order.
But it's, is Cory's responsibility to, to build this thing or is it, it's the pads? All the people that are at the pad company, your group, that raised all this money, proud of it, don't get me wrong. But shouldn't they be building it and running it and taking care of it?
But they build it the way that they're doing right now, we're gonna, instead of us paying sixty-nine thousand to maybe eighty-five, ninety thousand, it's gonna cost us three hundred thousand.
Why is it gonna cost us three hundred?
Because they're making all the changes to the features.
What's that reflect on us? We didn't make them.
That's why he wants to, he said, I'm not signing off on anything, he wants us to be completely aware of it.
It's, it's ultimately a village project.
Right.
And we're the ones, you know, other than eight hundred thousand, we're footing the bill on our property, it's our project. That's where I turned it over, you know, and spoke to finance that I'm not yay and, he says, I'm not.
You should.
Cause if I do, it's gonna be, I don't get in that for you.
Maybe it's a contract, you won't even accept it.
And if, and if I say no, then I'm gonna have another group saying, he's not working with us, so.
Well, let's do this, we've talked about it. I think we need to have them come to our next meeting. Cory's gonna have solid numbers of what all the increases are involved with and get breakdown, so we could have the splash pad committee come and discuss everything they're requesting or asking for and then we can have council discuss it. Want a plan?
When, when was Nagel gonna start?
They were gonna start in April.
So they're not, they're not too long.
Why wasn't a dollar amount decided by council at the beginning of the thing? Why didn't they say, okay, we'll keep it at a hundred thousand?
No.
A specific dollar amount.
Well, we didn't.
That way they knew at the time.
Well, the timing was still fucking that there would be a pool, so it wasn't until.
That night, the night of that was vote, the vote was no for the pool and yes for splash pad. And it was that, then the next question was who's paying the difference, since we're not doing both of them? And then it was. And then it was, well, you know, the village will offset the cost of the, you know, there's two prices, eight sixty-nine and eight hundred thousand raised. But we didn't have any other quotes from Sixmo on saying it's going to cost us for drawings, it's going to cost us for electricals, it's going to cost this for the features. I mean, we know there's going to be feature changes or trying to change the features.
All right, we will move on. Is there anything else before council?
See, people never see.
Yeah. Everybody in the audience? Usually. Richard, I'm going to say this, I'll do this tonight, but if you want to address it, council, I'd ask you to maybe call ahead of time and be put on the agenda, but I will allow you to talk tonight if that's okay. If you have questions that council can answer, if we don't have answers, maybe committee or anything, we can address them ahead of time. But you go up to the podium for me, Richard and Tom.
Probably get shot down. Okay, can you hear me? Okay, this is the second time I haven't received my water bill.
Correct.
And I called the lady up over here, and I said, can you send me another water bill? She said, I can't send you a water bill. Now, I've been here for twenty-six years. I pay my, I pay my water bill religiously. I don't have no computer, cellphone, or anything like that, but I do like to get my stuff in the mail, okay? So as soon as I get the, get it in the mail, I go up there and pay it. But why can't you send me another water bill? Now, you told, I talked to you about this.
Correct.
You was telling me about your newspaper. Well, okay, if I've got a newspaper and I don't pay my newspaper bill, you just start, you just drop, okay? Now, if I don't pay my water bill, what happens is you penalize me. In other words, you add another five or ten dollars on, okay? So what I'm asking for is, now, this is out of my control, maybe it's out of your control. So if I call up and tell them I did not receive, and this is the second time, the first bill went clear down to South Carolina and came back, and I give it to Dawn, I don't know if you guys got to see it or anything. And I don't know about my second one. But I would like to have my water, if I call up and say I don't have no water bill, I'd like to get it sent to me. And I don't know if there's an ordinance about using an extra envelope to put it in and send it to me, and then I'll be gladly to pay it. That's my first thing. My second thing is, I talked to the mayor about the water almost coming up in our driveway because the street, every time you pay the street, it keeps on raising, okay? Actually, I only got about this much curb now left. So my question is, in the wintertime, the water comes up to where your, the payment goes up. The payment is dry, is, is cracking off, breaking off, and it's creating a little lake. Now, if John Doe decides to use my driveway to go out across the street and slips and falls and bust his head open, who's going to pay for that? Now, I don't think, you're, you're saying that the, that basically, that the land between the sidewalk and the street is yours. So that's, that's one of the questions. And you are supposed to find out from one of your lawyers here, whoever your lawyer is, what is going on? Who's going to pay for it? I don't think I should pay for it, because it's not, all I got to do, all I'm supposed to require to do is to mow it and maintain, you know, that way. So this is, this is my second question. And my third question is, is I walk out here to the trail, you know, I like to do a lot of walking, you've probably seen me walk through town. And when I come to the walk, on the walk on the graveyard there, it's always full of stones. I don't know about you guys, but you got stones like sixes, and walking on them is hard to do. And you don't want me to walk out in the street because I might get hit, right? So I usually logically, I will use the sidewalk. So I don't know who's ahead of this graveyard detail, but when the state or whoever it is plows the stone on the wall, it should be cleaned off. In fact, it would be cleaned off if the walk, if the snow was removed from the walk. You know, I mean, when you take a snow shovel and do this and then over there, the stones will come usually with the, with the snow. So that's my three questions, and you want me to, if I come to a meeting and.
Well, if you have, you know, those kind of things, I, I did talk to you, and like I said, I had talked to Dawn about your water bill real quick. And she said, we usually don't resend, and I said, Richard usually comes up and pays his water bill due diligence. I don't think you've ever been late, even knowing you didn't get a bill, you know when it's coming, you're expecting to pay. You've never been late one time, you usually stop up. I know that, and she said, you usually stop up and pay your bill, and she, and she told you what your amount was, and you said, when you paid your bill, I make you a copy, and we're all good to go, she's going to stamp it and be done, and.
But I, I didn't give it in the mail. I, I like to get it in the mail.
And I told you, once it leaves here, we don't have any control over it.
I know that, but if I call up and said I don't have a bill, within, she usually puts the mail in the twenty-first, twenty-second, or twenty-third, okay? And usually I don't like to go past that, because I, on my bills, it's kind of like your religion, you know? When I give a bill, it don't step on, it don't stay on the table, it go. But I like to get a, a bill and an envelope sent to me. Now, this is the second time this happened. I don't know if you've had any other people complain on this. But all I'm asking you guys is, if I'm diligent enough to pay my water bill, and I don't complain about it, because even though it is high, that I would like to get it in an envelope. And that, and that's too much, Ron, you think?
No, it sounds pretty easy to me, just go to the window, tell her to make you a copy.
Well, I like to have it sent to me though. I mean, why?
I'm sure she did.
But why can't I just have the, why can't you spend? I even offered to pay the man, I'll give, okay, I'll give you a dime to send it to me. Maybe, I know you're talking about splash pads that are almost a million dollars, swimming pools that's three million dollars. And all I'm asking for is a bill put in, an envelope sent to me. That's all I'm asking for.
Well, if the second bill on these Sunday goes with the first one.
What's that?
Or if the second bill you don't receive.
Well, then I'll have to get another one, but I don't think it'll work that way. I don't, I doubt.
For twenty-two years, as I said, you've only seen it happen twice.
See, you guys are all educated. I, I worked through the hard things. You don't know what's going on. I had, I just got off the phone this morning, eight o'clock this morning, to my doctor about, we got a change in, in, in insurance and something in there. I took a letter to her, and she didn't, it's the same thing I went to this lady here. I tried to talk to her. You might as well talk to that Thor there. And then, just like, I tried to talk to this woman there about my insurance. The computers seems to be in a way of real life. I don't know, I know you don't understand that, because I don't have one, and I don't have a cell phone either. All I'm asking for is, if I call up, and this would be, I, I like to have another, a water bill sent to me. That's all I'm asking. Now, this, all you guys can make fun of me all you want, whatever you want to do. But this is a way I do things. I think it's, I call, I've had trouble during the COVID, Ohio Power, and I didn't get a bill in. I called them up, and they said, well, we got a, a bill in right away to you. So right there, I come there, I got it, made the checkout, went to the post office and sent it to them. But that's all I'm asking for is.
I will personally go see Dawn tomorrow.
She's going on vacation.
Oh, my goodness.
You talk to Cheryl's in charge of the utility department now.
I will personally go see Cheryl tomorrow.
And deliver.
It'll either be first thing in the morning or later in the afternoon, because I have a doctor's appointment somewhere. I'll get you an envelope with a stamp and every dang thing on it.
Okay, you'll send it to me, right?
Yes, sir.
That's good. All right, that's all I'm asking. This only happens one, this is about twenty-six years. This is the second time it's happened, so.
That's pretty good. I tell you, that's good, because even if you send your check back to us and your utility bill, and it gets lost in the mail, and we don't get it, you're going to get a late fee.
Yeah, but I don't, I don't do that well. We'll bring it up here.
You walk up here and pay it, right?
Eventually, you know, I'm going to be seventy-six here pretty soon, so eventually I won't be able to do that, you know?
No, you walk all the time, Richard. I know you check out a lot of sidewalks, and I appreciate your due diligence and.
Don't forget to tell the graveyard people about that.
I was on that same sidewalk yesterday, Richard. I know exactly what you're talking about.
Slipping a slide on it, it's kind of bad, isn't it, on your feet?
No, it's not slipping a slide. I mean, it's seventy degrees outside. It's pretty warm, so.
Yesterday? I don't think it was that bad.
Well, to me, to walk, to this guy, this bigger guy, I better make sure it's nice and warm outside. I walk anyway.
Anyway, we have also about the street, don't forget about the street, who, who is liable on the street. Whenever you get your lawyer, to ask him about it.
She's checking on it right now.
Yeah, she's going to, she's looking at it.
I'll leave you here. I'll go back, sit down, and be a good guy.
Yeah, thank you, Richard.
You're welcome.
Okay. Nominations, not nominations, executive session?
Yes, I moved, we want to go to, do you have any questions here, back here, folks? Anybody sitting here?
Well, then, just to clarify, sorry to bring up splash pad again, but I just want to make sure I understand this. So the change orders that are being put in, who is putting those in? Who's submitting those?
Well, they're not actually, I mean, no one's.
It's kind of a request for pricing, and if they did them, then it'd be a change order.
There's, there's a change order that came in when the pool, we decided not to go through with the pool. So the engineer, when they went ahead and redesigned the drawings, they were taking that four hundred amp service and moving it to, from the pool house to the splash pad, okay? But we don't actually need four hundred amp service in there. The only reason why we would is for a future pool.
Yeah.
Then we're, then we're sharing the same feed, the same meter. And we, if we build a pool in the future, we want two different meters, two completely separate feeds. She's talking about the features that are being added.
Right, and the change order was said, that, that phrase was said a few times about why the thirty-one thousand was for fixtures, and change order was said a couple of times with that. So who is ultimately responsible? Who is responsible for that? Who's doing that?
The features is, is all the foundation. The foundation is one hundred percent solely in charge of picking out the features. That was the, that was, that's the one thing they wanted, was to be able to pick out the features for their splash pad.
And then the discrepancy between what was raised by the foundation and then what is going to eventually be the bills? Who pays that?
The village.
Should the village pay? That's all I want to know, just to clarify.
That's what we're discussing, right?
Right, not, that wasn't an ever-ending number, like we agreed on the sixty-nine thousand plus electrical work. That was what was proposed and what we agreed on.
It's not open-ended. It's, we've got numbers that are set.
It just sounded very open-ended, like it may be now three hundred thousand more. That's what it sounded like. So that's why I'm going to clarify that. Okay, so there is a set number. What's the set number now?
There is no set number. We're allowing, we're allowing the splash pad committee to come and address their increases that they want and discuss it. Like I said, they wanted to come tonight, and I said, Corey didn't have numbers on our side of the electrical side, so we'd have numbers by the sixteenth. So if they wanted, I had offered that to them, but we were able to do more due diligence on where all the breakdown is with the total increase of everything.
Thank you.
Yeah. Okay, anything else?
I'd like to go into executive session for personnel.
A second.
Personnel, what?
How we go about hiring and funding? I guess that's how I would say it.
Does that need to be executive session? Wait a second.
I did.
Roll call.
Bassett?
Yes.
Beverly?
Yep.
Bailey?
Yes.
Miller?
Yeah.
England?
All right. Well, if we don't have anything else, I would think we, we, council's pretty much wrapped up. Thank you for being here.